I'm looking at my back. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for joining us for the June 3 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mrs. Knoll.
Here.
Mr. Dura Ray.
Present.
Mr. Roan.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And we have several presentations tonight. The first one is going to be about the overgrowth amendments, and I know Caitlin's going to do that. You don't look like Caitlin.
Miss Caitlin, too. Miss Caitlin.
So you can defer all the hard questions.
Completely possible.
We're just grabbing the.
We're just grabbing the text file.
So you can see it if there's any questions.
I think it could get smaller and smaller.
Well, because it's, and it doesn't help that it's way over there, too.
No, it does not.
All right, we've got it up and running.
All right. Good evening. So we're going to revisit the overgrowth amendments. These were first discussed, if I recall, back in our February 18 meeting at a public hearing, and then after some discussion, that got continued to this work session. What I did here, I'm going through the actual text of what's proposed and then kind of revisiting that to kind of work through it bit by bit for discussions. So this is what we're proposing to add. Now, this focus around cutting and removing, what we're defining is overgrowth. So it's this definition of overgrown shrubs, trees, noxious weeds, and ivy kind of grouped together. For what would quantify removal, we propose very specific conditions for removing overgrowth. So if it obstructs the view of address numerals on the building or mailboxes, if it's obstructing pedestrian or vehicular traffic, so can't drive, you can't see the oncoming traffic, or if you're exiting your driveway and it's grown up to a point where you can't get out safely. And then if it's obstructing ingress or egress from a building, and would prevent emergency response from getting into the building at either windows or doors or path to those places. And then if it's actually physically growing into the windows or the doors or growing into the building to the point where it's damaging the building, or, you know, sometimes ivy can grow into a building where it damages it as well. So these are all those conditions that would have to be occurring for the county to issue a notice of violation, for example. And then this was just kind of, again, further language we proposed. So we'd provide a one written notice of violation annually, running seven days to correct. That's taken from what is currently in place for grass. I mentioned that single notice. This is, again, kind of copied from what's currently done for grass. So we issue that initial notice for the property. If there's subsequent violations, the action to obey can be taken automatically in that year. And then there's those civil penalties. Again, this is also meering grass and what's also afforded to us in the state code. And this is just kind of a breakdown of, again, this is very similar to what's done for grass, but if an issue violation was noticed, it's kind of that process that would follow. So you would issue the violation, you get this period to obey. If you fail to cut or remove vegetation, yes.
My problem with this is a little bit, we turn ourselves into policemen. Who's going to go around and check to see? When is this triggered?
It's to be complaint based, like.
Just complaint based, by the neighbor or somebody?
Whoever's, whoever would complain about it. We don't have criteria.
But it stops at that last line in terms of fines. What's beyond that? The problem I'm looking at is not just an overgrown yard, but a dilapidated building. And when do we actually get in and demolish?
That's something we've looked at before, and we would have to set up a whole new system for that one.
Well, that's, that's separate from this. I mean, this is, this is really just taking care of the vegetative group. The actual building would be monitored by the building official. So if it's an unsafe building, then the building official could take actions under the building code to.
Let's see how, you know, they're unrelated generally if it's that much vegetation on the property, there's usually building damage as well.
And there could be. I mean, this, this would address it if they are growing into the building or something of that, we could cut it back, and then the building official would get in there and monitor the building according to the building code.
Again, that would be.
And that's already a process in the books right now.
That's a process we have.
I mean, if there's a building that's not safe, then the building official could take care of it.
A lot of it's complaint based.
All of it is complaint based, correct.
I just remember the situation I had on Middletown Farms. Eventually, we got the owner to demolish the building, but it was, it was years of effort to try and get to that point.
Right, it takes, it does take time, yes.
Seems to me we need teeth in that part of the ordinance rather than overgrown bushes.
Maybe, but.
So, Mr. Roan, I know that you had some questions, so I prepared some, just kind of to talk through those points that you raised. So to address the question you raised about address numbers, specifically, you know, okay, the vegetation's growing up around the address number. So we actually have another code section, 2035, our zoning staff enforces that for residential buildings. And so that really says that if you're a resident, you have to have address numbers that are visible for your life safety, and they do enforce that, actually. There was some discussion, I know about the seven days. So where that kind of comes from, in 2018, the board actually, it used to be 15 days for grass. So you'd issue a notice of violation, give a 15-day period. Because of how quickly grass grows, and so to issue a notice of violation, our higher, already has, grass already has to be at 12 inches. So what they kind of saw was that issue the notice, the 15-day period would pass, and by the time they're at that point, it would be like two or three feet. And so the board shortened that to seven days. And then also, with that same action, address the one notice per year, because what they kind of saw was there's these repeat offenders, if you will, with the grass situation. So that prevented them from having the cost of having to send notices by certified mail like 15 times a year, if you have this repeat situation. You just have the one, and then after that, okay, we send the contractor out and they'll put a lien.
All right, so we'll kind of hit these one at a time as we go through. So seven days, I mean, you can easily be away on vacation, out on business, get a notice of violation, don't receive it till you get back, come to find out that you're in violation, you've been fined, and maybe now you owe a bill for having a contractor come out and cut your grass where you could have cut it yourself, but you were away. Or you have a service member of deployment, he's on an aircraft carrier in the Mediterranean for nine months. We go to bus these people, they didn't cut their, get their grass cut, when they couldn't do it when they got back. So I'm a little concerned that we're being a bit too invasive, and if we're, and we're looking at this from a safety perspective, and I agree, as I said in my note, that we have a responsibility to protect public safety as best we can, but is 13 inches of grass a public safety issue? Is that a safety issue? I don't, I don't think it is. So now, I understand that if the, if the vegetation is to a point where we have varmints and critters and infestation, then that's a different matter. We need to take care of it, because that, that will bleed over into neighboring yards. But I don't, I don't see where 13 inches of grass is a safety issue.
So we, we actually, I talked to our zoning staff a little bit about this, you know, just to kind of get their perspective, since they do that day-to-day administration and enforcement, and, you know, kind of, you know, where the, and I'm just speaking about the grass really particularly here, is that, you know, usually when it rises to a point where somebody's calling and complaining about it, it's at such a height that there's other issues going on, where there's, you know, there's things living in the grass, it's, you know, it doesn't make, it doesn't make your labor, neighborhood look very nice, things like that. And so it, it does, they've told me it kind of does cause a bit of, it can cause a bit of a health and safety issue, because you get rodents and things.
So then, so then the ordinance would stipulate and address that, not just your grass is too high.
So, okay, speaking, I'm just looking at grass specifically, okay.
So before we go too far, I mean, yeah, grass is already in the ordinance, we're not, we're not suggesting changing anything in the grass ordinance. We were just, at the board's direction, we were asked to look at how we could control overgrowth of vegetation on the property. We didn't really look at the grass section, because that was already in place and approved by the board. So we were just really looking at the overgrowth piece. I mean, if you want to look at the grass, I mean, we can bring something forward about that.
And as, and as I mentioned in my message, I understand that some of what I'm addressing was already in the existing ordinance, but, so if we open that back up, and we're looking at this from a safety perspective, it should all be about safety, or we should leave it alone.
Right.
So we're going to, but we're going to get into it, we shouldn't just change it, we should make it applicable to write while we're at it, so.
You know, oftentimes, at least, I ran into this years ago, the neighbors complained about the grass being so tall, because they didn't like the looks of it, and it diminished their home next door. So that's not a safety issue, it's an aesthetic issue as well.
Right, and I don't believe the government has any business being involved in an aesthetic issue of a property.
We have set, we've set the rules accordingly, and as they've said, rabbits and other stuff
That's not aesthetic.
Long grass.
That's not aesthetic, that becomes a, a varmint infestation that needs to be taken care of.
That's right.
But that's not aesthetic.
But I'm not going to go down a walk with grass.
Was that? Yeah, but, like I said in my message, just I'm fundamentally opposed to government getting involved in aesthetic aspects of private property. We don't have any business being in there. And I, and safety, yeah, if something's happening where it's detrimental to your neighbors, yeah, we probably need to be involved there. But if it's just, I don't like the way it looks, I don't think the government has any business coming in there and enforcing something on somebody's private property. HOAs exist for people who want to live in that type of environment. They want to have very structured, understand that, hey, here are the rules, here's what, what I can expect living in there. A lot of people choose to live outside of HOAs, because they don't want to live in that restricted environment. I, I'm one of them. I lived in a restrictive HOA in my first home. I won't do it again. The next HOI I live in will be when I'm in the graveyard buried in one, and that's, at that point, I don't care how they keep it up.
You know, another thing to think about is tall grass is a fire issue as well.
Green grass doesn't, doesn't burn, so.
It's the dead, it's the dead grass underneath the green grass that grows up. And we ran into that issue in Hill Creek, I remember that, we have fires in the back, the grass that wasn't cut.
So Mrs. Knoll, as Mr. Anderson pointed out, you know, what we were here to do was look at overgrowth of tree, trees, shrubs, and other such vegetation. Where the grass, if we want to go back to grass, we can have another meeting on that.
No, you're right.
But that's, this is what we came to talk about tonight at one of your other board members' behest.
So, all right, so let's, let's talk about that. So, you know, we're, so the stipulations is if it's impeding access to the property, so first responders can't safely get in there, all right, you're covering up the numerals, okay? So someone's in violation, you let them know that you're in violation, and they take their pruners and cut the one branch, and now you can see the numbers. Probably still going to get a call, because everything else, nothing else has changed, but they aren't compliant with the regulation. We're, we're okay with that, right?
I mean, we, we would enforce the ordinance, as it's written. I mean, if, if they were cited because we couldn't see their address, then, you know, if they cut it so that we could see it, then that would be fine. If it's the ingress, egress, that, that's a different thing. I mean, they would have to.
Right.
Show that, you know, they can get in and out of the doors and windows and so forth.
One, one of the concerns I have is we're kind of looking at this from a sanitary environment, where we, we send somebody a notice of violation, and they go, and the best-case scenario we're hoping for is they go, okay, I understand, I'll fix it, or I'll get it fixed. But there's another extreme to that, where someone has, don't, they don't care, they have chosen not to address it because they don't want to, and they may come out one day and find a, find a contractor up on their front stretch from steps, cutting back this rubbery, and may not respond to that very favorably. They may respond to that very aggressively. Now, we're going to start rolling next year, step at ease every time we, we send somebody out to those locations to.
It's possible.
It's a, it's, it's a, we're, we're going at a bad spot here.
Most of the time, it's, you know, places like these are, are not inhabited, or they're with people who really don't come out very often, and they don't, or they don't have the ability to maintain it, those kinds of things, situations. And so, you know, the county tries to work, the zoning and code enforcement staff work very diligently with anyone who's in violation to try to help them get. with anyone who's in violation to try to help them get to a place where we don't have to send a contractor out. And they work with them over multiple weeks. Yeah, it says seven days, but we contact them and, and try to work with them as best we can to make it happen.
Because the ordinance doesn't say that. The ordinance says you're in violation, you get a notice. It doesn't say, we'll work with you, we'll spend some time with you, we'll try to get to a happy space. It says you're in violation, you get a notice. You got seven days to fix it. It's very black and white. So.
As Caitlin shared with our experience with the gra, cutting the grass, I mean, we, we do, the, the zoning staff works with people and they know there are certain places every summer where we know we're just going to have to go through the process and then the contractor's going to go out there just because the people just, we did, we don't care. They don't care. They're not going to mow it. It's not going to happen. And so, you know, they just get the bill by the treasurer. They either pay it or it goes on the property eventually. But most of the time, they'll, well, I wouldn't say most of the time, but some people pay it. And that's just because they, they don't want to spend the money to go out there.
And I know we run an issue with abandoned property that is.
Oh, right, but even houses sometimes.
We've had, we've had to come in and take care of some stuff, but.
Right.
I'm more concerned about the occupied property where somebody's made a conscious decision like, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it like it is. And I don't need the government coming in and telling me my shrubs are too big.
And we understand that. And we try to work with people on those situations best we can. You know, if it does end up that we have to go out there, you know, there are situations where, yes, a deputy has to come out and be out there on site while the work is being done.
So now the service department is going to contact us. They need more service deputies for, this is going to cost us money.
I don't know if that happens that often.
So, so the ordinance should reflect that, that we will work and that this is the final step, is the issue of violation and so forth. And not just a hard hit right from, right from the, right out of the gate.
Yeah, and I'll say that we, we try to work with people kind of on a, not on a codified section because the law is the law and yes, we can, we have to enforce it. But we take, we take a very customer friendly approach when we're enforcing things. And if we, but I mean, it still has to be codified the right way. And I would be concerned, and I don't know if Richard wants to weigh in here, but I would be concerned if we put something in there that was kind of wishy washy, we may not be able to enforce it at that stage. And so I think our approach of being very customer friendly and, and wanting to make sure that we're working with people as much as we can in a variety of different ways.
Which is good, which is the right approach. Remember, this is complaint driven. Somebody's calling in expecting you to do something right now. The code says you're going to issue a violation and in seven days they got to fix it.
Yes.
It doesn't say it'll start a process where you try to get them into compliance and then it will end up in that state if they have to.
And we do have people that do that also. And we, we try to work with them in addition to say that we are working to try to get it done. And so sometimes we do have to be a little har, harsher and quicker with things. But most of the time, we do try to work with everyone that's involved.
What, what about the issue where you have somebody who is physically unable to do the work themselves and financially incapable of paying somebody to do it? And we're going to, we're, we're putting the county in a spot where we're going to force it to get done and charge somebody something they can't afford and put a lien on their home. And then every six months, every year, however quickly the shrubs come up, we're doing it to that same person. And I, and I talked to Mr. Abbott and, and Housen asking, hey, do we have some grant programs? Are there some avenues where we can avoid that? And there are some things out there. Also spoke with my pastor. Cause I know that we, at our church, we have a helping hands group. Asked him and said, hey, listen, can you partner with some of your peers to see if we can get a network across the county that Mr. Abbott can call upon? So some of that may be covered, but I, I doubt whatever will be in it a hundred percent.
So we do have a committee that's made up of social services, zoning code enforcement, fire and life safety, and some other agencies that when we run into these issues with hoarders mainly, we try to work with them and get them the assistance that they're looking for to get these services done for them. But so, yeah, this kind of goes back to that, you know, we're trying to work with, with the people as much as we can to help them get where they need to be. And so, you know, in a few cases that I'm aware of where we've had, you know, someone who just did not come out of their house. They didn't come out of their house. They got everything that came to them and they didn't go anywhere. So, you know, you've got trash and debris in their yard, you know, trash, and then their home is full of things. So we have, we have a different, different ways of kind of working with people to try to help out. I mean, I think that's a great idea to, to work with Abbott and his group to kind of create that helping hands kind of thing. I think that would be an amazing piece of that. But I mean, I understand what you're saying. You want it to be codified, but also with the understanding that we work with people. I think we, we try to do that in a, in a non, you know, harsh way to make it happen. I mean, I, I don't know that there's ever been somebody we've just like gone after and not given them any room to try to, to do things. Because even if we take them to court, the judge is going to give them more time to settle it also.
And now they're, they're going to make more costs.
How many cases do we run into for this annually? Anybody have an idea?
I think I have the number actually here for grass. Where we actually go out and cut somebody's grass?
Well, I mean, you get the complaints and you have to resolve them. I'm just curious.
May I address the issue of the seven day notice?
Yes, you may, but I'm just looking at it. Hundred.
So you have about a hundred violations a year?
For tall grass.
For tall grass.
We actually mow only about sixteen.
About sixteen of those tall grass violations. So most people, you know, go out and take care of the situation and there are a few where we have to send the contractor out. And I think this would be even less with this type of ordinance that you're proposing tonight because you just don't have a lot of overgrown trees and shrubs most of the time.
I know, one is complaint. That's about it.
And then why is it the topic of discussion? It's not an issue.
It was brought up as, by the board that you all wanted to.
I didn't bring it up.
What, what problem we solve?
In any way, you wanted to discuss.
To the point of the seven days, I would note that the ordinance does not mandate any specific time that the notice of violation has to be sent. You have seven days from when it's sent.
Yes.
So before that happens.
Sent or received.
See, that's, that's, that's an important distinction there too. Says, something in the ordinance about it's certified letter, registered mail to.
But that, that, that really wasn't the point that I wanted to address. I mean, you, that's a good point, but what I, there's no, it doesn't have a mandated time period at which you have, at which they have to send the notice to somebody. So they, they had, they can do, they can wait six months and a year. And in, in my experience, they don't start going after somebody until they've basically exhausted all efforts. And the, if you, if you were to start putting expectations in the ordinance, it would be impossible to ever prosecute a violation because it would be an affirmative defense every time. Well, they didn't use reasonable efforts. Well, what are your reasonable efforts? I mean, so you, the, it's built into the discretion of the agency already to wait. So that's just my, that's just my two cents on that.
That's good, that's good feedback.
And, and, and the discretion and how that discretion is exercised is up to the individuals that are employed and the county administrator and the board's expectations about what types of things are done. So it may be that somebody decides we need to start doing that more quickly or we need to give them more time or take additional efforts. So I think it's, and sometimes it's a case by case thing. But the ordinance already allows maximum flexibility. I, I, I think it would be difficult from an, as Mr. Anderson said, from an enforcement standpoint to add additional benchmarks in there.
That's, that's good feedback. I still think the seven, seven days is, again, you catch somebody on vacation.
In the context of overgrowth, we could extend that to 15 days perhaps, if that's a.
And I would say that after we have verified that somebody has received the violation. You know, they, they, we got to know they got it, otherwise.
I think on the overgrowth, for me, 30 days is fine. Cause it's not like it's happened overnight. It's not like grass. Overgrowth has been going, this overgrowth could be years in the making. And, and there's not going to be very many of them. Doug had one. I've got one right now that.
I, I, I got, yeah.
So, but it's not going to be like every time they turn around, somebody's going to be complaining because their neighbor's got a tree that's overgrown.
And I'm also worried about if, if you got two neighbors got to beef with one another.
Right. There's your point.
As a stick. You know, that's our world.
Yeah, it could be.
Do that all the time.
It could be. Absolutely.
Tom?
Yeah, I, I'll go back to when we first saw this. I asked the question of what is the purpose of the ordinance? What, what a problem are we addressing? Okay? And the things that Steve's bringing up, we've, you know, we've, we've talked about that. It's always a concern. You know, we live in a homeowner association. You have property rights. Don't be a property right guy. So the question is, what are we, what are we trying to address here? Okay? If you look at the, I think it's still up there, right?
Okay.
Yeah. If you look at the first four of these, they're public safety issues. Okay? Last one, number five, gets more into aesthetics. Okay? So I go back to, again, what are we trying to solve here? Safety issues. Now, I can understand why we have numbers on houses. One, not only just deliver mail, but so the fire department can figure out where the, somebody's having a heart attack and you got to be able to find it, right? And that, that question's been around for a long time. And if you look at the other four, they're all sub public safety issues. Now, the only part of that that I'm a little concerned with is most of the public safety issues that are being addressed here in this manner is that we are now applying them to Dominion Power, VDOT. I mean, we're, we're saying, VDOT, if you're going to have, you're going to have bushes in your right of way that block the speed, excuse me, the traffic signs or any, any sign or access and visibility for traffic, then you got to come out and get it cut. And that just ends up being a call because we're not going to find VDOT. We're not going to find Dominion Power.
I don't think we can.
HRSD. We're not going to do that. Okay? So that kind of, there would be a rare situation where, I bet it could happen. But I think it's a rare situation where you're going to have many of those, the first four, that apply actually to a home that's on a public road. Now, you could apply to a, I'll give a great example. It's Chad Green's property. Where you have a lane that's, that's basically a private lane that's shared property with, or shared lane with other, with other homes. And, you know, somebody doesn't maintain it, but you got growth, it's addressed in there. But, you know, I'm just speculating. I, so the question again is what problem are we addressing? What problem are we addressing here? Now, grass, I understand the grass and the whole thing about the grass, and it's interesting. You talk to the most homeowner associations, they get upset because it's the aesthetics. But it has in the past been a problem with wildlife living in there. Some people don't like the idea of snakes in your, in your lawn. I mean, I go on a golf course, saw a guy the other day freak out over about a four foot black snake in, in the fairway. And some people just can't handle that. Okay? So, and, and we had a home in my district where the code violations were so bad. The building code for the house, back of the house separated, the porch or the little room separated from the house. Okay? And then it had raccoons and opossums actually living in the house because the homeowner didn't live there. He lived in DC. But all this is tangential to the issue of why, what are we addressing here?
Well, let me address that first. Number five can be a safety thing for sure. The house in my district has limbs and vines growing up into the soffit that has been broken. And there's squirrels and varmints in the house that's been abandoned. And the people that own the house.
Safety issues.
It's, it's just as much the neighbors, if they've got varmints and living in a house in a structure next door to their house.
So a guy has a shed, lives in a homeowner association and it's elevated off the floor, off the ground, and a fox comes in and, and, or a coyote and has its litter underneath there. Is that a public issue? Is that a safety issue?
I would think it is.
Yes, it is. But are we going to go out and find him and make him go out and remove the fox? In, in compliance with what code? What, what?
I, I would certainly think he'd call animal control.
Animal control doesn't deal with wildlife. They only deal with cats and dogs. A lot of people get the idea that they'll remove bats and tree swallows or chimney swifts and deer and any other animal. That's not. You better be saying yes over there. I know he's shaking his head. So that's what, that's what wildlife, other, other than that, other than that, you're going to have, you know, we can go, well, you've got to go have a rat snake or a black snake pulled out of your roof or, because it's above your kitchen and your wife's freaking out. So.
You got squirrels in the attic.
$1,200 to do that. Okay? So again, I mean, we're looking at all the other stuff. And I understand you had the problem down there, but, and there is one. Okay, there's one. Dominion Power, for example, has a line that runs across somebody else's property. Okay? And the other, the person that crosses the property doesn't want anybody to come out there cutting their trees. But the limbs on the trees are hitting the power line to that other person's property and it's getting intermittent, uh, intermittent electricity. Now, that's a problem. I think it could be a safety problem. But in, but Dominion Power is hesitant to wander onto somebody's property because they got the, a little lady comes out just screaming and hollering, they'll be on my property cutting my trees. And so the gentleman or the family on the other place are kind of going, what, what's the recourse here? We could be addressing that, but are we? I mean, that's a, that's an individual, a real life problem. I'm down south from next. So what problem we solve in here? I'm not a hundred percent sure.
This is a real problem for the neighbors, what I'm telling you. The, the house is abandoned. Nobody's living there. It's, it's, and it's somewhat dilapidated and the owner refuses to do anything about it. That's a problem.
But we, but hey, we have a lot of houses like that.
No, we don't. Tell, show me.
Just coming up here, in my district.
Show me where somebody's complaining about them.
They're not complaining.
If they're complaining to us, then the county can address it. That's what this ordinance is. If someone complains about a house like what I have in my district, which is right around the corner down here, that's a problem. If the neighbors aren't complaining and they don't care what the houses look like next to them, no big deal. Then this doesn't address it. This only addresses a situation that.
So you're saying that this is addressing only that kind of situation?
Unless somebody complains, it's not going to address anything.
Well, it's, most of our code is, so.
That settles it, is what I'm saying. This is only for complaint driven. They've already said that like six times.
That's why I ask my questions around demolition. And I understand that's a different ordinance. And so that's the avenue you follow when the house is dilapidated and the trees are running through it and your raccoons and everything else are living inside of it. That's a demolition case.
But I think this house could be saved. That's the difference. If it can't be saved, you walk in and it's a total wreck. This, this house is not completely dilapidated. But it's got trees growing into the house. It could, it could be saved. It will. If we don't do something about it now, it will get to the point where it will be dilapidated. And so again.
This is where I have a problem.
We're trying to offset a problem later on down the road.
But I mean, if we had bears living in the house, I could understand it. But raccoons and opossums, fox, coyotes, they're all over the place. I mean, you could have a pristine place and you're still going to have those varmints running around your, your property. So, I mean, I, if you, it's, if you got a little bit of woods near your place. I mean, I see this, so I'm not sure how we're addressing this because Steve's brought up a problem, an issue that he's concerned about, which is property rights. Okay? And us telling somebody that you got to go pull vines out of your house. I mean, I swear to God, I got a house. It's in my neighborhood. It's got vines. It's got ivy growing in the house from the outside. So I'm not, I'm, I'm having a little problem here with the same thing of us telling people how to maintain their property. Cut, I mean, everything if it's not tied to, but I think a very clear delineation of safety, I'm having a problem with it.
I have a problem with somebody having a dilapidated house that's, that's basically left it and won't do anything with it. That's a problem.
That's a property. They own it.
Sadly, sadly, these cases.
These are, these are complaint driven.
Peanut butter spread is.
People aren't complaining. It will never be addressed and that's fine. We're only looking at this ordinance in case people complain about a house that's next door. And, and it goes back to, if I live next door, Tom, if you live next door to this house and all of a sudden you go, hey, I'm moving to Florida, and you try to sell your house, the value of that house is going to go down.
Another issue.
Hundred percent. I don't care. It's still a part of what we're trying to accomplish here. It is another issue.
It's, that's another issue altogether.
It is another issue. But sitting on this board, it's our job to protect the people of York County, not just the people that abandoned their houses.
Who would be protecting them from?
It's everybody around that house that has to put up with it.
I mean, if they don't like it, I mean, I don't know. I just don't want us to go overboard.
I don't think we are. We can take, we're given an opportunity. They've already said they're going to go talk to them. If they don't do it, the county's going to go over there and take care of it. It's plain and simple. It's that easy. And then they're going to put a lien on the house if the, if the owners don't pay for it. It's just that plain and simple.
But what, but what is the county going to take care of?
It's not a safety issue. Nobody lives in the house. The house falls down or there's a fire running in there, I can see, but.
We're not going to go there and send the staff over to trim up that bushes, trim up the house. I mean, we're not going to go do, we should be doing that on an abandoned property. I mean, I'm. I mean, laying a fine down, I can understand, but I tell you what, you're getting into the... It's not clear to me that this is a public safety issue. It's clear to me that what we've got...
It's a nuisance.
Could affect the value of the property, I grant you.
100%.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And you can see this in, if you see it go down into Portsmouth, or some city, where the... Which you have kind of the rot in the center, right? And the people aren't gonna go live in there, you know? So, there's a lot of issues tied to this, but I don't see us getting... Once you get away from the safety, you've declared delineation of safety, I've got a problem.
What happens if you have a house that you have shrubs and trees that are actually growing in your neighbor's yard? And it becomes a nuisance to your neighbor? And you say...
Like you got a tree that grows over it, it's on your property.
Yeah, maybe you got one leaning that's broke, that's dead, it's leaning over the property, and it could hit their house. And the property owner says, I didn't do anything to that.
That tree falls into your yard, guess what?
It's your responsibility.
It becomes your tree.
No kidding. That's exactly what I'm saying.
It becomes your tree, though. I mean, the thing is, that's why we have homeowner insurance. It's supposed to cover damages from a falling tree, or something like that, or your apples, or whatever you... The pears, whatever you're growing. And this is not new, Wayne. This has been around for a long time, okay?
I'm just shocked that this hadn't been addressed.
There's a very vibrant body of law on this, because people sue each other about this kind of stuff all the time.
Look at the example that you shared with us. So, based upon the amendments that are proposed here, and your example, county would send somebody over, and they would cut back enough shrubbery to make sure you could see the numbers, and enough shrubbery so you could have access to the house. But it's not gonna fix broken windows, it's not gonna fix raccoons, squirrels living inside of it. It's not gonna address any of that, and nor do we even have staff to go and pull raccoon stuff out of it. Or possibly, trust me, I know, I've been through that scenario myself before. So, but what... And I think I said this earlier on, what we really need to address is an abandoned property ordinance of some sort. That's something that we don't have today, and that we do have a problem with. I don't think that's an easy solution either, but we do have an issue with abandoned property, probably like what you described there, but we have no documentation, nothing in our county ordinances to address it, and we probably should.
Is it abandoned property, or is it abandoned structures?
I don't know. Is there a distinction?
Well, okay.
What is a structural property?
So, we actually wrote a memo for y'all on this, or there was a memo that... Was it last calendar year, or this calendar year? Last calendar year. That was... The question was raised about a property maintenance code. A lot of localities, cities particularly, have these around us. The... What we found, and we talked to actually the enforcement staff, who would enforce property maintenance code, there's like a model code that a lot of them adopt. One issue was, you know, is it actually... For the... Kind of twofold. So, one was cost, certainly, because they actually will go out and, to a degree, like, try to, they have to abate. And so, that was part of the concern that, you know, the cities can kind of absorb the cost for enforcing a property maintenance code.
We can't.
We don't, you know? That might be more of a challenge for us, possibly. The other issue was, you know, again, this is just the specific concern that was raised was very contextual to, you know, the house on Ambler was, the trees and the overgrowth was... And so, that's why we kind of pivoted towards, well, let's look at, you know, maybe doing something like this, overgrowth ordinance, to address those kinds of situations, the issue with, you know, trees, and you got bushes in your windows, and that's causing problems.
And Wayne, I get it. I mean, what you described, I... You know, nobody here wants to live beside that, but whether it's appropriate for government to come in and force compliance, to me, that gets into government overreach. I'm big on property rights, and I don't want somebody to come up into my yard and go, hey, you know, there's a zoning ordinance, and your shrubbery isn't right, or whatever. That's the type of overreach I want us to actively make sure we avoid. We also have a responsibility to the resident of York County to make sure that we don't get in too much of their business either, so... And again, I understand what you're looking at, what you're trying to accomplish, but man, it's a slippery slope. You gotta be careful. Because I think we can all look at examples, other places across the country, where it's gone too far.
We've talked about this before, and I think we looked at the legal sides of it, and also the cost to the county, more staff, training people to look at property properly. And we decided that that really wasn't our business. And that was a while ago.
Yeah, but that was kind of... It was kind of a slumlord issue, you know?
Yes. The slumlord issue was a bad issue, I know that.
And we ended up with that hotel or something that was an issue, remember?
And that we could take... That we took care of.
But we did it in a different, a way different way. Pay the bills, got behind on stuff.
Well, the health department and everything else got involved in it, because people were living there, whereas an abandoned house, people aren't living there.
I think these are far and few in between. That's my opinion.
But I...
And I think you address the ones that are complained on. That's my opinion.
Well...
And if the people, if the neighbors don't complain on it, then it's not addressed.
I mean, I can tell you for a fact, that if you create an ordinance that will do something like we got up here, then people, the homeowner associations, will use that as a cudgel to slam, you know, so they don't have to go into court and deal with their issues, okay? That's part of their association. And the neighbors will use it to beat each other over the head with. I've seen it so many times. They've tried to drag us into their fights, and the only one, it's either a building code violation, or the grass, okay? And that's pretty clear-cut. And we've had them go out and cut grass, and we notified the landowner, vacant landowner, or wherever renter, or whatever it is, not the renter, but the owner, and they're either gonna pay up, or they're gonna get fined. But we don't go into the beautification, aesthetics, or anything like that. It's not our... I'm just...
It's not our job.
You can, I mean, if you wanna go that far, you can end up with a... You can end up with an ordinance that's pretty tight. I mean, you have to, you know, to color your roof if you wanna do that, but we're not gonna go... I don't think we're gonna go there.
I think if you guys live beside it, you would be talking differently right now. Guaranteed.
That could be, but we're not living beside it right now. We're trying to decide this for everybody. And I don't think you have the support for it. But I... You know, it is what it is.
I can live with the first four items up here. Fifth item.
I think the fifth item has to be in the ordinance that covers demolition. It's already existing ordinance on that. And that's where you cover this kind of issue where...
Is that an abandonment as well?
Typically, it is. If a tree is growing through the roof, or it's fallen through the roof and caved in the whole building, then it's not the bushes you're worried about.
Now, the previous attorney, county attorney, had this thing called an attractive nuisance.
Right.
Okay? And that's where an abandoned building, you kind of warn the owner that you're falling into this attractive nuisance thing. That's where, you know, children will come play in a building and get hurt. Then, whatever happens, you tell me, tell us, I don't know.
Well, we already... One of the issues with the nuisance is, is that, and I think one of the things that's driving this request is, we already have the authority under the grass situation, as we've discussed, to use self-help, where you can go, basically tell them, if you don't do it, we're gonna do it, and we'll be building for it. We can't do that, because we don't have the authority under our... State law allows us to request the authority, but we have not adopted the authority to do it in cases like Mr. Drew is talking about. Where we would basically say, hey, your trees are too high, you've abandoned property, we're gonna come in and trim your bushes, and cut your tree, or even do anything more than just grass. And so, that's what this would address. I mean, there is a whole nuisance process that we could go through, requiring getting injunctions and everything, but...
So, when I jump... So, let me just, just to say, can I address that, because we're on this issue? So, we have this poor situation, abandoned house, stuff like... What is the process? What is this issue?
I would have to look and see what the specific... The nuisance requires very specific findings and very specific things, and some of the questions that are being asked here about public safety would potentially be an issue. But you could theoretically bring a nuisance to... But that would be essentially doing that, but asking the judge to give us the authority, which we do in certain types of things. Like, we also have the ability to clean up trash, when people like leave a bunch of trash sitting out, and they don't do anything with it.
Abandoned cars and all that stuff, right?
But a lot of times, for the trash, we have to go and get an injunction, because our code says we can do that.
Okay, in this case here, is there any judicial state judicial process from the state code that we can use to apply to this case?
Yes.
Without us creating? It's always a crap.
Probably not. I mean, I don't wanna get into the specifics of rendering a legal opinion about whether it is or isn't a nuisance, but state law allows localities to adopt a process to deal with this exact situation, which is what I think planning is attempting to do in this ordinance.
Okay, the state allows us to create an ordinance to address the situation. What is the situation?
This overgrowth. It's actually specifically in state code.
How is it? How is it my problem in District Five?
So, the way it's written in state code, it's actually quite literally this definition of like overgrowth, and then it cites like noxious weeds, vines. It's like very specifically that, and it's for our, like, planning district.
And I don't know that we can answer that question specifically. I mean, it's kind of, as Mr. Drew said, a kind of case-by-case basis when someone's complaining about it. So, if someone is complaining to you, let's just say, you have a house, and they're saying, you know, the trees are growing into the roof, Tom, we want you to do something about it. Right now, there's really not much that we can do about it until the building is damaged to the extent that the building official could go in there and condemn it.
Condemn it, right.
Well, I mean, okay, that's a good point, because we brought up, remember the stable down there with the Royal Farms? It's now... And we had a stable there, and everybody complained, or complaining that the roof caved in.
I had a house with roof fully down, and nobody lived in the property.
We find out that the walls were two feet thick, and they were brick, and they were built like 150 years ago, and there was nothing we could do, because the walls weren't falling down. I haven't ever seen any of those ever work out. So, I'm saying, what is the problem here? Is it a problem of, is it a public safety problem that we can define?
I think it is. We just talked about it. What if some of the neighborhood kids broke in that house and got hurt? That's a safety issue, because it's abandoned. And nobody's gonna stop them kids from going in that house, because there's nobody there to watch it. And they could certainly break in that house, in the condition it's in.
How long's it been like that, and has anybody broken into it?
That's beside the point, Sheila. The point is, somebody could go in there tomorrow and get hurt.
Sure. Could.
So, that's the nuisance part, that there could be a safety problem for neighborhood kids, or anybody. It could be a squatter.
Well, can we define this in some safety manner? As if we define this as a safety, as some manner of safety? I mean, is the proximity to the house, does it become a fire hazard to the house? Does it have electricity going to the house? Does it have water going to the house? If you're gonna define this, as you're gonna define this as a problem, the problem is, what are we addressing? I still don't... I sort of... I understand the aesthetic aspects, I think we all understand that. But I'm just not gonna go along with something that just addresses the aesthetics. I'm sorry. That's why we have homeowner associations, that's why you can go over and buy somebody's property, you can do all this other stuff, okay? But if you got a safety issue that somebody's ignoring, then let us figure that part out.
So, I think to just address that, I think the safety aspect is the access of any person, any law enforcement or fire and life safety personnel that might need to get access to the structure. So, this would take care of any, like, shrubs or trees that are growing in front of windows or doors.
Then this goes to what Steve just said. So, we have an ordinance that will only require us to cut enough shrubbery away from the door to get in the house.
Correct.
It'll only cut enough shrubbery away to get to the number.
It's not to make it look pretty, it's to create, to alleviate these items that are one through four or five.
To perform a rescue operation, something like that.
If it was ever needed, right.
But, okay, so we're not getting, as long as we're not getting into aesthetics, I mean...
No.
And I'm not sure that actually... I don't know if that even addresses any issues that would satisfy your constituent.
I do have one other question. Does this apply to unimproved lots?
We've written it right currently, so it's developed property. So, this one, if you have like a farm field that's fallow or something, you know, we wouldn't apply this.
So, it does not include unimproved lots? We would leave those alone?
But undeveloped lot could be on a, along the roadside, and could have shrubbery that's blocking your view of traffic. We're not going to reach out to the property owner there and get them to address like we would somebody with a developed property?
So, for grass, we... My understanding is, don't it, like, just to use grass as an example, they do cut, we cut 50 feet in, so if this were to get adopted...
Again, for undeveloped property.
Yeah, we could.
I think if it's blocking a developed property, yes, I think that would be the difference.
I'm just thinking, coming out of the Old Lakeside Drive on Lakeside, you look left, you can't... You got about 100 feet of visibility there for traffic coming, and I think that lot on the corner is developed, but I think the lot right beside is undeveloped. So, we would bust a person on the corner to go fix your stuff, and then the undeveloped lot, I guess we would take care of that and not charge anybody for it. That doesn't seem balanced.
I mean, if it's blocking access to get out, I mean, a lot of times, we can have VDOT come back, and they can clear those shrubs up. They cut them back also for safety reasons.
Why wouldn't they do that for the developed lot, then?
I mean, they could also do that.
And along those lines, you know, our public safety, our public works team is very responsive to safety issues like that, have often come out to take care of those things. Are we not gonna need them any longer for that work?
Our public works doesn't address that, actually. My understanding is, when it's grass, it's like, you know, we send the grass contractor out.
I'm not talking about grass, I'm talking about when the branches are going over the road, you can't see down the road, it becomes a safety issue to pull out.
Yeah, my understanding is, if it's in the right...
It is VDOT responsibility, but I can't wait...
It is VDOT's responsibility.
But I can't wait for a month for VDOT to get out there, so our public works crew has done a fantastic job in response to that and addressed the safety issue.
And I think those are case-by-case basis authorized by the county administrator. I mean, that wouldn't be something that we would use this ordinance for necessarily.
So, county administrator, Victory Boulevard, major highway, big pain in my butt, okay?
I came along well this time.
It has a power line that grows all the way across, goes across the road. It's around Sinclair. You go over there today and there's a vine growing all the way across Victory Boulevard. It's hanging down. If it continues within a couple of months, it's going to be bouncing off the cars. Can you take care of that?
Let's cut the vine at the root.
Not my problem. I mean, I'm just, I bring it to the, I bring it to the government's, the government's attention.
The vine at the root, it will die.
Can you get that, you take care of that?
I'll get Mr. Krieger right on that.
Solve the problem.
Yeah, cut it, cut it, you cut it at the knees.
You were taking notes back there.
Yeah, I didn't even just, I didn't need to see him, I knew what he was going to do.
It'd be amazing, I was going to, I was waiting to see how long I was going to go.
Hey, we've discussed this a lot, where are we?
So I mean, we will bring this to your next meeting for continued public hearing, and then you all can hear what, if there's any public that has continued information to share, and then you all will be able to vote on it.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I will, I will make this recommendation. For me to support this, five has got to be a safety issue that we were addressed specifically. The access points, the number of points, it's going to be, if, so if the purpose is public safety, okay? As long as you can couch it in public safety terms, I can buy into it. I can't buy into it the way it's written here. You've got to buy into it in the legal term, like legal terminology that deals with safety. Because I can go to my constituents and say, look, what, what happens if two kids go into the house and, and get killed because the place collapses on the house, collapses on them because we've let it deteriorate to that point? I don't care about the law at this point, okay? Because I'm going to have screaming parents all over me because I didn't address an issue. Right? So the issue here is we address it from public safety, I can buy into it. Okay? I'm just not going to buy into this using this thing to beat people over the head because of the property, the property rights.
Is that clear enough?
Okay, I think we're there.
If we've got our guidance.
Thank you very, very much, appreciate it, and look forward to what you bring to the board meeting next time. So next on the agenda is Chesapeake Bay Board. Joe, are you doing it or John Krieger, who's doing it? Oh, okay. It's a triumvirate.
It's a man.
Let me see if I can find the PowerPoint. Is that your PowerPoint here? Can you see if that's what it wants? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm joined by Kent Hinkle and Mr. Joseph Brogan from Public Works. I would like to say that this is my 25th year of service with the county.
Really?
So.
Congratulations.
That's a rough act to follow, so you have to take it easy on me.
I haven't had, it's not been my experience.
Good luck.
Yeah, loads of luck, where the term goes.
So a little history. Back in 1988, the General Assembly enacted the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. And the purpose of the act was to protect and improve water quality in the Chesapeake Bay by requi- ooh, see, now he's done messing it up. Requiring the implementation of effective land use and management practices to protect the waterways. So in September of 21, the Water Control Board adopted a new sec, section of regulations that will require the state mandated revisions. That'll be passed down to the county through the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area's ordinance. The main focus of this was coastal resilience, adaption to sea level rise, as well as climate change. So local governments are going to be required to perform a resiliency assessment on proposed developments encroaching into the RPA. There is going to be new guidance regarding what is a mature tree. And there, the local ordinance is required to be updated to reflect these changes. In addition to these ordinance changes, York County will amend buffer requirements Part One and Part Two. And I, I know some of you guys have gotten this in your correspondence package for a little read ahead, so if you have questions, feel free to, you know, throw them our way. So these, review of these proposed ordinance and updates and the buffer requirement documents. So right out of the state playbook, they've been working on this since September of 2021. And of course, they hand it to us and say, you've got to adopt this by September 29, 2025. So it's up for discussion now. The plan is to have a public hearing on July 17? June 17, thank you. And then at that point, public comment and then adoption of these new ordinances.
These ordinances, the, the changes, are they? Do they come from the state saying, you have to put that in there, or did we develop it ourselves?
These are state mandated changes.
So state mandated from the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act.
So we got to take state code and put it into our ordinance. Does that make it all effective? I don't, I don't understand that, what, what do we?
It's, it's the same game that is, what, what did we do last year, wetlands?
Right.
It's basically, and we have to comply, the, the Chesapeake Bay Board and the Wetlands Board are actually extensions of the state, of the state operations. That, they say, hey, they come to us that you guys want to do this, or you want us to do it? Okay? And so historically, we said, we would like to do it because we interact directly with our constituents. That's not some agency that's, that's not here locally, okay? Or not, you would have to, at one time, you had to go downtown, what is it, in Newport News? Because that's what the, they, the board would meet down there. But here, they get to meet, we decide to take on these rules. So if we're going to take on the rules, we have to have an ordinance because that's how we operate, right? So therefore, we have to incorporate all that crap into our stuff.
Yeah, it, it's, it's curious, it's funny how this comes right off the heel of the last discussion by property rights because now we're looking at an ordinance where we're going to tell them, people, yeah, you, you bought this property and it's very expensive waterfront property, but we're going to limit, we, the state, through this county code, are going to limit.
Believe me, we.
Don't think, I think, notified before they bought the property that, that, that these are the requirements for the property.
Well, yeah, but we're going to re-put some new ones in after they already bought the property, so.
I seen us putting these things in here, it's a state.
Well, and, and it's basically a copy and paste, so you, you should, you should put this in here.
So, so the restrictions on the waterfront properties has always been there with the Resource Protection Area buffer. So these are additional restrictions. They're looking at storm surges, sea level rise, because what they want to do is they want the county, when they review these projects, to look at the future so that development is not built in harm's way. Storm surge, sea level rise, flooding. And so we look at these projects and push them towards the front setback if you have waterfront property. But that was traditionally done anyway with the Resource Protection Area. These are additional requirements that is going to, they're going to push you, if you have a detached garage and you have a waterfront property, you have nowhere to put it but in the Resource Protection Area buffer, that's going to go to the Chesapeake Bay Board for review. And all these parameters are going to be presented to the Bay Board to say, is this the best place to put it? Is there any other place on your property to locate this so that it may not be damaged in a storm? Where can we put this? Some people don't have any, any options but to put it, you know, in the RPA, in a sea level rise area. But all these things now need to be looked at with these ordinance changes.
And I, and I understand that aspect of it, but there's also language in here, amendments about what you can do with trees on your, on your property. You know, you've got, you've got this huge tree, it's got one good branch on it, but it's a mature tree, and you can't cut it down.
Well.
You know, it's, it's, again, it just gets into, yeah, you kind of own the property, but you really don't because you can't do some things with it.
So there, there are some extra guidelines in there if you were to cut that tree down. It would explain you have to replace the tree or remove with X number of trees this side and three shrubs, or one tree and five shrubs.
This, I don't want to extend this, but it doesn't, this, this ordinance, so the action of the Chesapeake Bay, it's a, it's a state, it's a state agreement, not only with us, but the states, Maryland and all the states in it. So there's a, there's a huge extension of this, okay? It goes, it goes way beyond this. All this is going to do, Steve, is just make our ordinance, if we want to have a Chesapeake Bay Board, this allows us to do it. That's all it does.
Let me, let me, let me ask this question. We're going to, this is a kind of a public hearing, you said on the 17th. So if someone from the public comes and says, I don't support this, I don't want to see that happen.
They're not going to change it.
I think our response is, we understand, but we have to put it in anyway. Thank you for your. Much like the conversation we had back with Jim Barnett several years ago, or two, three years ago, with a, putting in a cell tower on a school property. There's a lot of issues about that, and then Mr. Barnett intervened and said, oh, by the way, due to the Federal Communications Act, unless it's not zoned for it, you have to do it. In which case, I'm like, why are we even talking about it? It's got to be done.
That's right.
So that sounds like this is the same deal.
What this is.
The same, okay, all right. So just make it short and sweet. Because it's state mandate, there's nothing we can do about it.
I'm done, but I'm staying for the next one.
Okay, so now the next one is Queens Lake dredging, is that correct? And you will, you're going to talk about this one?
Ken, come on back over, man.
Ken, you got out of this?
I did take a shower.
Let me do the secret talk.
I'll run you off.
Will you get you more hot coffee?
I probably bring more coffee here for him, but I thought he's gotten cold.
Welcome back. He's still been here 25 years. Easy on him.
15 minutes.
Have we ever been easy on you, Brian?
No.
Are you over 25? Yes.
Forty.
Extra nice. So Queens Lake Dam and Spillway, so just a little history. We'll take it from the top, go through some, a little history, where we are now, and then I guess we can talk about agreements, board resolutions, and then the next steps. So as many of you, we did a, I guess a work session about two years ago. The, the dam and spillway were constructed, you know, before state and county stormwater regulations were permitting requirements. There's a substantial amount of stormwater drainage flow that passes through the basin and the county stormwater easement into Queens Lake and an area known as Princess Pond. This would include drainage from Interstate 64, parts of the National Park Service, and there are several smaller neighborhoods that also drain into this basin. So how did we get to where we are right now is, so several years ago, the Department of Public Works, the Good Offices, started to work with Queens Lake Community Association. They reached out to us, I guess it was spring of 2022. And what they got hung up with was in 2020, DCR changed the requirements for dam inspections. So we came in and helped them with some permitting to get it classified as a low hazard dam. The issue with that was if, if it stayed there and we didn't work under this special use permit, the public road would become an issue, which Route 716 for school buses and emergency services vehicles. So.
Is that the road over the dam you're talking about?
Yes, sir. So I guess, you know, we've been assisting Queens Lake, you know, their association, they have a special committee as part of our Good Neighbor, Good Offices program. So all of this, after another work session, culminated a board resolution, R 22137, which gave the county administrator then an ability to execute a memorandum of understanding with Queens Lake. So the memorandum of, of understanding, I know you guys got this in your read ahead, I think it was about a month, month, six weeks ago. It kind of outlines the mutual collaboration and agreements between the county and the Queens Lake Community Association to include points of contact, some other interesting pieces or major pieces of it. The county would take the lead in project management permitting, as well as coordination with the Virginia Department of Transportation, DCR. And then Queens Lake would assist the county with obtaining the easements and then make a one-time capital contribution of $110,000, and then an ongoing annual contribution of $20,000 for ongoing maintenance and permitting over the next several, several years.
But they don't have an organized homeowners association that they have to pay into, do they?
So there is.
Finance it.
There is, from my understanding, some of them are and some of them aren't. I don't know the history of that.
It's not mandatory like in Kil Creek where everybody has to be, it's voluntary.
Everybody has to pay.
Doug Ellis said he might come tonight.
Told me he'd need to because he couldn't speak.
So, you know, some of the positive outcomes from the project is, it would be a sustainable management, stormwater management design. It would assure the Route 716 and the public road access remains viable. VDOT, while they acknowledge the road, will take no responsibility of the, the dam. Gets us in compliance with DCR regulations. And over the time, there was a SLAF grant given to us for matching funds that the county currently has, so you're looking at around $2 million. So I will say that there are two pieces to this project. One of them is the dam and the spillway, which Queens Lake Community Association has already bought some wetland credits for. The dam, the spillway work would involve sheet piles around the concrete spillway. There's another group right up the road on Route 17 that was put in a very similar situation to Queens Lake, which is the dam at the Newport News Reservoir.
Oh, yes.
You, you know, driven by there, they've done some work and they've put sheet piles to protect undermining of the concrete. The other part of this would involve some work to the ravines to, to stop erosion and then another overall goal of limiting the speed of the water traveling in these ravines to cut down on siltation and buildup in Princess Pond and the lake. So we are working towards that. I'll, I'll let Joe, Mr. Brogan, talk to this slide, he can give you an update. So keep in mind, there's two parts, dam and spillway and ravines, and he can tell you where we are with purchasing.
Zones and lake.
Yes, thank you.
So we've got 100% plans for the dam improvements as well as the spillway. We expect to go to bid in July for those. The, the ravines, we've also got 100% plans for them, and we've got permits for the dam and spillway and the ravines at this point, so there's no real, there shouldn't be any major hurdles to get through. And we expect to go and bid for those in August.
August.
So Joe, I got a question. I'm here, I've heard all the briefing here, I haven't, and the state's title dredging. I haven't seen it. Where does the dredging going to occur?
Dredging is a very much, very big difference, issue.
Is there going to be dredging?
There's no dredging.
We're going to get to that slide. We're going to be discussing.
It's another time, Tom.
We're getting all around the paint. I want steak here, we want the gansels now.
Be patient, go ahead.
I'm giving the story, sir, I'm going, okay, let's see, I think it's the next, here we go.
Here you go.
So Queens Lake Community Association, Association, you know, has reached out for some more assistance with dredging and the removal of the silt from both Princess Pond and part of the headwaters of the lake. So we do have some preliminary costs for this type of work. It's a couple of years old, it was right at $17 million. I would, I would assume that it would be a little bit higher than that now.
What about the Army Corps of Engineers?
How much dredging we talking about here?
The Army Corps of Engineers should be helping with this.
So I, I should have read that part in the, in the read-along. It was, do you know, the AH?
Yeah, the, the, the 17 million is the, is the pinnacle of restoring the lake to its original depths. Obviously, there's lesser things you can do, but that was.
100 feet, I mean, tell me what we talking about here?
So the, about half of the lake has experienced significant siltation over the 100 years it's been in existence. They say, the HOA members of Queens Lake have said that it was drastically escalated with the work being done on Interstate 64.
But I mean, I'm seriously, I mean, are we, are you trying to take a, you know, a couple of yards off the whole lake? Or half the lake, or are you taking that?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
It's costing $17 million?
Yes, sir.
Part of the curveballs is, with this project would also be, it would take several years in permitting. One thing that could potentially drive the cost up very high is what do you do with the spoils? Do you remove them off the site? You know, or is there somebody willing to? And those are all things we'd have to work out with the Corps once we, you know, if we progress to that point.
How did you come up with $17 million?
We got a cost estimate from AH Environmental.
And what it is based on?
They had some estimates made at depths of the lake and siltation of the lake from aerial photographs, and you could see the vegetation and creak, crumption into what was water and is now forest or grass.
There's also, was a.
Now I understand, I understand stream restoration, okay? And, and, and the, we, the need to flow stormwater. And we're just savings, we're, we're building, we're going to redo the dam and we promised we'd do all this stuff. But I'm trying to understand what $17 million is going to buy, because we had to. I mean, you only need to take it down a couple of feet. You don't need to take out, you know, take, oh, the original, the dam, was it going back to the Ice Age or what? Because, I mean, the, the point is, there's some limit here, what we're going to put up with.
So they, they looked at the historical of the lake, and then working with Queens Lake Community Association, they had a whole bunch of pictures. and then working with Queens Lake Community Association, they had a whole bunch of pictures.
Historical to what, what period?
The, the, the data from where the lake, the depths were, were in the past. But here's the kicker to it. The state doesn't recognize the lake or Princess Pond as a BMP.
Ah, so that's a big.
Before regulations.
BMPs are basically, man, we build BMPs. Nature builds lakes, so.
So is this a man, a man-made?
Yes, this was a man-made.
But it's not a BMP because it excesses the, the rent.
Built, built long before regulation.
It's not, it's not self-imposed.
So, you know, this work is outside of the scope of agreement, but we have talked with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've been up to the Queens Lake HOA meetings and Mr. Schumacher was there. I believe that was his name, right?
Yep, it's Joe Schumacher.
Mr. Whitman's office.
Okay, right.
You recall that we requested help from Mr. Whitman, Congressman Whitman, about a year ago to support us on this issue and could he, could he bring federal help?
I mean, I mean, put it, I, I just trying to, you know, we're going to go play this thing, right? So, so the, you got, how many acres of lake are we looking at?
No, I, I think before you even go there, the process is let's get a decision or input from the Corps. What has to be done? And we don't know that.
That's kind of, kind of getting to you because it sounds like me, way this is being presented, is that we're going to get ready to buy into.
We're trying to give you the background and say, paint the picture. I, as the, the public works guy, I'm, I'm coming to you for guidance.
Yeah, but let's get, let's get the point in.
So I, you know, there's a couple of grants that are out there, both with the Corps. They're anywhere from a twenty-five to thirty-five percent match. If the county was to take on this endeavor, the county share would be anywhere between four to six million dollars.
But the county has to come up with the money first.
Uh, it, it would be a match. And I, that four to six million dollars is probably the entire county stormwater capital improvement program.
Let's, let's stop.
That's right.
This is, this is not what you were coming in to present.
I'm just.
We have an option to go forward and get the Corps of Engineer to work on a study on what would be required long-term for the improvement of this lake. The study requires about a hundred thousand dollars, of which that is fully funded by federal monies, provided we sign a non-binding letter of intent. And so the intent was to come here and ask, does the Corps support going forward with a non-binding letter of intent so that we can get the Corps to answer the questions that Mr. Shepherd has been asking, which I have been asking.
You know, I was going to say it takes a letter of intent from the county administrator.
Thanks, thanks, we put it, we put it in some perspective now, okay? I couldn't figure out what you're at, what we're about to do here.
Ask is do we support going forward with a letter of intent? To have the Corps of Engineer do an engineering study on what would be required long-term to.
We're not bound by, we're not bound by.
We're not buying, we're not selling, we just agree to let the study go, right? They asked for the study because then you got to come back and tell us how much the study is going to cost, right?
When we get to the backside of it, how much it costs for us, then we have to reconsider it.
Federal monies.
Okay, good, so just want to approve a study. All you got to do is say yes.
Does the study include understanding where the, where the silt's coming from?
I think we understand where the silt came from, but it gives us an understanding of what you need to do to move forward with a correction. And then, from Congressman Whitman's standpoint, he then has Corps of Engineering support for why he wouldn't want to take it to some of the federal departments and say, this, you need to buy into some of this.
It's a big part of this equation, isn't it just fixing the problems this day?
It's preventing from happening. Get the political capital in place so that we can address the issue longer term and have.
And the question is, how long was this going to take? The time, from the time we applied to send the letter of it to the Corps and the Corps responds?
It's a rolling, I think both of them are rolling.
So, it, it, so basically, the letter of intent will put us in the running with projects nationwide. It's, so there's no guarantee that this.
That's what I'm thinking.
So we can get the letters in and then it's a waiting game to see if they ever.
First step first, then take care of that, okay?
I mean, I, I understand what we're doing now. I mean, I was, I thought we were getting about to.
Okay.
We don't know what we're getting into yet.
We're getting, they were getting into really heavy stuff here.
We're down in the weeds and we're using expressions, we don't need to be there.
Department of the Interior and he needs more data and he needs the Corps to provide that data.
A lot of questions, he has seventeen million dollars, a lot of money.
Are we voting?
So.
Do we need to vote, you just need consensus?
I need consensus, correct?
Is, I think, is there consensus that we move forward?
I'm okay with the study. I'm okay with the study.
We're spending federal money.
All right.
Just get a big jet job boat, jet drive boat, tie the bow up to the, to the shore and just blow all that stuff out the other end of the lake eighty percent.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
You just need to get some of those watermen with hauling a mattress behind.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. The next thing, the next thing on the agenda is a Virginia two fifty update. And you've got Jimmy Scruggs, Heidi?
I didn't recognize you.
Gee.
I don't recognize you.
I was just, I was just, I was thinking exactly the same thing, I didn't want to say it.
Recognizing, oh my God.
Where's your captain's hat? I don't, okay. Okay.
But you look great.
Man chair, members of the board, Heidi's going to talk about VA two fifty first, whether start.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Heidi Spees, I'm the content marketing specialist. And tonight, I'd like to give you some updates on the VA two fifty here in York County. And just as a reminder, the VA two fifty is a statewide initiative that's partnerships between government agencies, museums, nonprofits and such. And they recently came out with a short video to show you what we are celebrating and that is our heritage and the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States.
From the first English settlement at Jamestown to the surrender of the British at Yorktown. From give me liberty or give me death to all men are created equal. From Washington and Jefferson to Madison and Mason. From Powhatan and Pocahontas to James Armistead Lafayette and Gallen pamphlet. From the ideas that inspired it to the battlefields that decided it. There is simply no America without it. And no better time than now to reconnect with your country in the place that made it possible.
Our involvement in York County will extend all the way to October nineteenth of two thousand thirty-one. And you can see in this picture from the Yorktown Tea Party anniversary, some of the close partnerships we've developed. We have the National Park Service, the Jamestown Yorktown Foundation, the Colonial Seaport Foundation, the Waterman's Museum, different reenactment groups and the VA two fifty. And in two thousand twenty-five, we have three events that are kind of our signature events. One has actually taken place and it was Two Lights for Tomorrow. And this took place on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Paul Revere's Ride. And it started as a statewide initiative and it extended throughout the entire nation. We had, what we asked people to do was place two lights in their windows to signify the one if by land and two if by sea. And we had the White House, NASA got involved, the Empire State Building. But there was one locality that received word that per capita, they had the most participation. Can anyone guess which one that was? Yorktown, Virginia. So we had over twenty public buildings that participated and countless citizens. We even had people going out to the gravestones of veterans and service members and placing votives on the graves. So it was a really, really great event. Our next event will be actually this weekend. It is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Lord Dunmore's Virginia Campaign. We are commemorating this, not celebrating it.
Yes, one minute, you're doing it.
Because he is the gentleman who emptied the magazine in Williamsburg of the ammunition and then proceeded to attack up and down the York River and that. So we are going to have reenactments. The Luna, the tall, tall ship you see in the center there will be back and serving as the backdrop. We're also going to have live entertainment and the VA two fifty mobile museum experience will be here as well. And that will be at the American Revolution Museum at Yorktown. And our last event, unfortunately, the British are sticking with us. We just have to stick it out till two thousand twenty-six. But this is a remarkable event. We work closely with the National Park Service on this. It's called Before the Siege. And we recreate what life was like when the British invaded Yorktown before the siege of Yorktown. And we bring historic Main Street and the battlefields to life at Readouts nine and ten. So mark your calendars for September sixth and seventh.
How long has it been since we've had reenactors out there on the battlefield?
We've had them, it's small. Last year, we did a little bit, but this one's going to be even bigger. Yeah, so it's been a little bit. But now I'm going to turn it over to James to talk about another big event.
So next year will be, twenty twenty-six will be the Sale, Yorktown Festival, commemorating twentieth anniversary of seventeen seventy-six. If some of y'all remember, in two thousand twelve, we had an op-cell event here and it was to commemorate the two hundredth anniversary of the War of eighteen twelve. This one is going to be a huge nationwide event, not only nationwide, kind of worldwide. We've got ships coming from all over the world that will start in New Orleans and come up the East Coast. We are an affiliate harbor of Sale, Virginia, Norfolk, and our weekend will be June twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, the weekend before that. We are in talks now with multiple different ships, looking at coming. And as we get updates and confirmations with them, we will be letting everybody know what ships will be coming. Like in two thousand twelve, there'll be a lot of stuff on the water. But this event will be expanded throughout Yorktown, all the way to the Moore House, up to the cemetery, to the American Revolution Museum, to the, the beach. We're going to actually use every aspect that we have to spread that around through everything in town. The ship there is a Godspeed and that is actually a YP Yard Patrol boat. So just like two thousand twelve, we're going to have more Navy, US Coast Guard vessels, hopefully, some new things that we haven't had before that you might have seen on the river but have not stopped in Yorktown before. We worked with and we will, will be working again with Fort Eustis. So hopefully, all encompassing of all branches of the military, as well as our marine boat and our VMRC officers to help us out with everything. Everyone really enjoys going on our service vessels, the military vessels and the tall ships. They're, they're a huge attraction and a huge draw. We will be the weekend before Harbor Fest and their event. Once the ships and everything's here, they will go there. After that, they'll travel up the coast.
So are you seeing the dates, the twelfth to the fourteenth, or you say that that's when they'll be here?
Yes, ma'am. And.
And what time is it going to be in?
We will have, we're going to work on right now our schedule of events. We will, I know there will be a parade of sail on Friday. And then after the parade of sail, we will have free deck tours on all of our vessels, as well as a lot of other entertainment and stuff throughout. And then Saturday and Sunday will be a more extended, more extended free deck tours with that. Hopefully, we can get the Coast Guard back. They did a SAR demo, which is a search and rescue demo in two thousand twelve where they had a boat. They put kind of, um, in smoke, it came over in a helicopter and jumped out of it rescued the people and we had the river on, riverines come and do demonstrations, Navy SEALs on, on their boats. So there'll be a lot of different demonstrations out there on land and in the water. We are working on our website and it'll be, have all of our updates as well as our scheduled event. Hopefully, the sooner the better. We are working on that as we speak.
That's good.
Have you got any questions?
That's very exciting.
It's a lot of work, it's exciting, it's fun.
Looking forward to that. Back in, we were celebrating the two hundredth, the bicentennial. I remember there was, and we can't, I don't think we can really do it now because the beach has changed so much. But back then, I remember that we had stands on the beach for people to sit in and the Marines, the military did mock beach landings there. They did mock strafing runs with helicopters up and down the beach and so forth. And similar to what you're describing here or something, it could be.
We're working on some things with all the military that are coming. We're, we're looking at maybe doing some challenges between the branches of military and doing some stuff like that on the beach. We'll see if they're wanting to participate in that. We got a lot of really neat things that we've never seen here or had here that I think are going to be really great and bring a lot of people in and showcase what we have to offer them.
And who all is working on this, the county?
The Tourism and Economic Development Department, very diligently.
Those two.
Smile.
And will the dock master be ready?
Always ready.
I'm always ready.
I'm at the building.
It'll be broken in by then.
We'll be ready, yes, sir.
Good, good.
Yeah, we, we, we got, we got, we got, we got one chance to do a two hundred and fifty celebration. So let's, let's go all out and get, get it right.
Yes, sir.
You're giving them the martini others. Okay, thank you very much, really exciting about.
Wonderful presentation, thank you. I love the video.
I did too, I think that was super.
Did, was that our video, who did that video?
VA two fifty.
Okay, they, okay.
They did that, okay.
Good on them.
Okay, so now the next thing we have is our consent calendar. All right. Let's see, item number five is approval of minutes. Number six is the VDOT project agreement for the people of our capacity enhancement project. And number seven is the approval of the Arts Commission funding. Number eight is the sponsorship resolution to study potential zoning ordinance, text amendments regarding small modular reactors, which is an interesting one. Item number nine is a purchase resolution, village, I like this one too. Two hundred and eight trolleys, these are the smaller trolleys.
About two hundred and eight of them.
Yes.
It's a model number.
Right. Item number, all right, whoa, whoa, whoa. Item number ten is modular classrooms, this is a hazardous waste training facility in lease agreement with the Commonwealth. Eleven is a retirement resolution for Fire Chief Stephen Kupchinsky. And now, if there's anything that anybody, if there's anybody who wants to pull anything from, for discussion.
I'd like to chat a little bit more about ten, just to get.
About what?
Number ten.
Number ten, the modular, that, I, yes, let's talk about that one. Who's handling that more? Steve, come join us.
One more time.
So as a matter of background, a number of years ago, we entered into a partnership with Virginia Department of Energy Management. And they had occupied a facility in Ashland for many years to do hazardous materials training for all the hazardous materials technicians across the Commonwealth. They had to move out of that facility. They came to us and at the time, we were using a classroom at Dominion Power. And so they set up some makeshift operations there to train folks. And then they wanted to make it a more permanent arrangement. So through significant effort with the Virginia Department of Energy Management and some grant funds that they had received, as well as the fact that we had property behind Fire Station Six, we developed the hazardous material, hazardous materials CBRNE training facility whereby hazardous. whereby hazardous materials technicians and advanced... Advanced hazardous materials responders from across Commonwealth come to that facility to obtain training. We use it for our own hazardous materials training. We use the facility for our recruit schools and a number of other functions. So when it was set up, there was... We were operating on a shoestring. We located used classroom trailers that came from the schools that the schools were getting rid of, modular classrooms. Had them renovated somewhat, and they have just gotten way past their useful life. And this is an opportunity for us to replace those facilities with modular classrooms that we're going to enter into a lease with Commonwealth of Virginia for the funding, the annual funding to support the cost of those facilities.
You hit upon a couple of questions. One, the location set behind Station 6, remind me where that's at again?
No, it's Fire Station 6. And by the way, that facility is... The fire station site is about seven acres. And that, when we constructed that fire station, AMICO actually donated the property for that fire station and the adjacent land of which the hazardous materials training facility is on.
All right, and the other question you answered for me was, everybody from all across Virginia will come here, make use of it?
So just the hazardous materials training courses that the Virginia Department of Emergency Management conducted last year. There are about almost 13,000, almost 14,000 hours of training there. Those folks that come here and attend that training, they typically stay in hotels in York County. They go to our restaurants in York County, they... all of that. So it's a huge benefit to us, not only for having the training facility here where we can use for our people, okay? But also, there's some added value from a revenue perspective.
And last question. Is this practical training or just classroom training, or both?
There are a number of...
Training props. There's a full... There are a number of railcars that are there. There are hazardous materials transport trailers that are there. There's even a railcar from the Lynchburg derailment. And so it's significant practical training, as well as classroom training.
It's back there and done that.
I have a... I have a miles on it. I didn't do that, so...
Good data. Thank you, Steve, very much. You got a question?
There's just a question. Why modular classroom? Well, a number of years ago, we didn't have the funding in our... Obviously, our CIP. The ideal situation would be brick and mortar type of building. And through the partnership, Virginia Department of Emergency Management attempted to get funding for brick and mortar classrooms, and were unable to do so. So this is our second best arrangement.
So we still use the trailers to, you know, throw smoke bombs in there and have people kind of wander around in some of those trailers, don't you?
Not in... Not at this facility. We do not. We actually conduct that type of training.
That's over in four days.
We do it in schools.
But normally, smokehouse training and that sort of thing, we do at the Peninsula Live Fire Training Facility, which is a regional initiative that's located in Virginia.
Thank you very much. Is there any... Any other questions?
Thank you.
Open discussion? Have we talked enough, or do you have some things you'd like to talk about? Tom?
Are we gonna... Are we gonna... You gotta prove this?
We gotta move this, don't we? Yes.
I'll move it. I'll move it, yes.
Roll call, please.
The name by Mr. Shepherd is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Snow?
Yes.
Ash and Carrie?
Thank you very much. Now, it's open discussion.
Okay, this is for the board. It's... And you don't laugh when I bring this up, but it's... It deals with barbed wire, okay? We do not... Yeah, we don't... We do not have, in our ordinance, a capability to approve the use of barbed wire for protection around businesses, okay? We had... Recently, we had... You've seen that construction going on down Victory Boulevard. And I use this as an example because Dick Ash, you know, I was talking to him about this. And the issue is that he had... You know, they've got several businesses in that building down there. And they've cleared it up. He's put a new black fence up there, and then he's going to put some other stuff that you can't see through. But he had made a request that he could use some barbed wire on the top in a manner that would not be too distracting, but to protect his property. Because he said he had like $15,000 worth of stuff already taken out of it because the fence that was taken down. And they were noticing that the people that was stealing had actually pulled up on the side there in Victory, dropped somebody off. They'd gone in there, got to... And then the car came back around, picked them up, and they'd taken the stuff. Now, that's... You know, that was actually a very easy steal because the fence was down. Okay? Now, the back part of it is still a problem, okay? Now, so I went to county administrator and it was... Because they were putting the fence up because they had to get it protected to protect the property. Well, we couldn't approve the use of barbed wire, okay? We could not approve the use of barbed wire for protection.
Okay.
So the question, why couldn't... Where's Susan? She's here somewhere. Okay, so we went back and forth about this, and she doesn't have the authority to do that. And because the state, you know, basically, we don't have an ordinance to address it. So the question goes, well, we don't use barbed wire in York County. Well, that's not true. We do, okay? And we have it on... If you go down the Victory Boulevard, on both sides of Victory Boulevard, you got the old box wire fence. We call it... Used to call it just box wire. I don't know what they call it now. But then there's barbed wire across the top of the line, okay? And people think, well, that keeps the deer from going over. No, it does not. Actually, what it's used for is to keep people from going in near the property. Okay, yeah. A deer fly over that and heartbeat. Well, there's also, not only is it done by the state, but we have some places where they have cattle, okay? And they've used it, which is pretty... Which is really what... An original tenant, they could have put up electric fence. So anyway, there is... There is actually, on that property, Mr. Ash's property, there is barbed wire across the back already. It's been there.
So why is he asking for it? Why does he just do it?
Because... Oh, because if you go do something that you're not allowed to do, you get the lady back here.
Mr. Shepherd, there is no barbed wire on that property. I walked the entire perimeter of that property.
I saw it. I saw it yesterday.
It's... Then he's put it up illegally because it wasn't there before. I walked the entire perimeter with Mr. Ash.
I've seen it. It's a piece of one strand of barbed wire.
Then I'll walk it tomorrow because they don't have barbed wire when I walk it.
Okay, well, anyway, look at it then, okay?
It's not legal.
It's okay. I understand.
But the point... Here's the point, okay? I'm not into... I'm not into trying to make this... We're going to have homeowner association barbed wire fenced around, and that's not the point. But to be able to address that...
Probably, for sure.
To address it, we have to be able to send it down to the planning commission, you know, or say, hey, look, you know, planning commission, look at this, see if there's some way we can approve the use of barbed wire.
Does the county code disallow it?
In the state...
It is silent on it, which means it's prohibited.
Yeah, see, in the state, because it's a due and rules state.
And we have that.
Unless the state tells us we can do it, we can't do it.
Can you use razor wire?
No.
You can't. There's nothing... There's nothing that addresses this issue. So...
Does the state tell me that I can put up pink flamingos in my yard? And if it doesn't make... I mean, I'm not only with you, but that whole...
I know, I know. And I've been down this road many times over the last 20 years, okay? On different things. I mean, I remember the issue, you can't go out and throw a football or all this. It would be just ridiculous. And there's... It gets into this thing. I'm not using the right term, but it's a common life things, right? Well, this is... I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about having ability for her, okay? Because what is your role now?
Zoning administrator?
No, come on. No, about neighborhood use and stuff. Is that what... Does that fall under the category?
What do you mean, neighborhood use?
I mean, all right, I get that. But here's my point. We got... I'm proposing that what we do is we send a... We sponsor a package down to the planning commission to study the use of barbed wires, a protective element for businesses, okay? I mean, that's where I'm kind of... And they could come up with any other thing, but it's to study it, okay?
Or, okay, are you thinking as a temporary measure or a permanent measure?
I don't care. Let them come up and come back with a recommendation, how to use the stuff.
Is... I'm okay with looking into a recommendation.
I mean, that's all it is.
Protect their stuff. Would there be a distinction between barbed wire and razor wire in this discussion?
No, I don't think so, but we can look into it.
But I mean, it's just another protect... I know, you know, I talked to Mark, and Mark goes, well, they got cameras up and everything else. Well, you know, sometimes cameras are good and sometimes they're not. And if people are going in there stealing stuff and you don't know who they are or you're not getting the license plate or whatever, then it's not doing... And it's not pointing in the right direction. It's just not working. So it's just the idea of being able to allow businesses to protect the property where it's needed, okay? So all we want to do, is what I'm asking the board to do, is let's just... The sponsor package to go down to the planning commission to study that and come back with a recommendation. That's all I'm asking for.
There's certainly businesses within York County like AMICO that have barbed wire.
I know. There's other places that have barbed wire.
Right, they do. Sure.
Yeah, having an ordinance that addresses the topic makes perfect sense.
Right. So...
And now Camp Perry is loaded.
Oh, that was the other part. Military bases. Some of the military bases have it too.
They have more than barbed wire.
I mean, there are other places.
And like your fire fences. That's... You should put a charge on this fence.
It's always fun.
Okay, if, you know, we consider the planning, we'll be sending to... Going to this, we'll be hearing from everybody about it. I don't have any problem with it.
You just... I'm not talking about approval here. I'm just talking about going down and studying, to come back with a recommendation. And that will then allow the county to give a thumbs up, thumbs down on a request.
Our county attorney, what do you say?
I have no opinion on it.
Okay.
Should he? Because this is just us making a request. So there's no legal issue here.
Okay. You said, do we have to ask the...
I'm asking here, the board.
Do we have consensus?
I'm good, yeah.
Sure, go ahead. Fine. Mark, you got it.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss?
You had two things?
One thing.
I can't remember the other.
All right, well, so I think I shared my thoughts on property rights and...
I think you have too.
And government overextension. I would wonder, though, if we do need to start having a conversation on how to address abandoned structures. Because what Wayne describes, I think, fits into that. And I don't think we really have a way to address it. I think we should at least start having a discussion to see what is right, what isn't right, whether it's something we want to pursue or not. But I think, I don't know how to initiate that, but...
Well, that's a good...
We could take a look at what is done elsewhere in similar jurisdictions to us. I mean, I wouldn't compare... Say Newport, New Hampshire is different. It's a city, but maybe other localities in the county, maybe, you know, does James City have something like that? But, you know, there... I mean, there's any number of abandoned structures, particularly in our right 17 corridor and so forth, that right now, we can just... All we can do is just sit and watch it slowly rot away. And I don't know if that's been the best interest of the county, so...
So just as Mr. Shepherd just asked for your consensus on the item he had, if that's what you all tell us you want us to do, is take a look at that and come back to you with some recommendations about what we saw in other localities. We certainly are available to do that.
I'm not sure what recommendation you have. I'd like to see some study done, just some feedback on right here. Here's how it is addressed elsewhere, and then we can see if that's...
Mr. Anderson wants to speak to this, if you don't mind.
Could I just get a little clarification? Because we did bring to you the property maintenance code, which you all said no to. And the overgrowth was the output of that. So when you say abandoned properties, abandoned structures, what is... What is it you would specifically want us to look for to qualify?
Well, and I want a little bit of help with that, too. How do all those localities classify abandoned structures? And we have to be careful with it because one thing, what Wayne described reminded me of, of an issue I had in my district where there was a building, a home in something like a very similar... Very similar shape.
Well, if you want, you will talk to him to go through the thing. Rest of the county.
I'm getting dizzy spinning around. It was a similar shape. The construction... Construction had started to rehabilitate the home, but the sign was missing, stuff flapping in the wind, open to the elements and so forth. I think a lot of the feedback, hey, it's bad, in bad shape. And the county went out and looked at it. It wasn't in a condemnable state. But if you go back and look at that same property now, the homeowner was able to get resources together. And last time I was there, it was in really good shape. And maybe, unless it was a year ago, by now, it could be a really nice home on the water there. So, you know, how do you determine whether it's abandoned or not? But other people have solved this problem or have addressed this problem. Let's learn from them and see what may or may not be applicable.
Right, and I'm just trying to get the clarification because if we don't want to do a property maintenance code, if we don't want to cite somebody for their sighting falling off their house or the sofa coming loose and make them fix it, I'm just kind of trying to understand what... How do you want us to determine if it's an abandoned structure? That, you know, no one's lived there?
And is there a state code that addresses what an abandoned structure is? Again, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We learn from others.
We can take a look at it. I mean, I just wanted to get a little clarification since we had already brought the property maintenance code to you and just said no. I just wanted to just make sure that we're on the right path and bringing you what you're looking for.
So Steve, this is... Kind of helped the staff understand it. State brought before us was basically, it was almost this slumlord deal, okay? And it got to be, you know, we can create. The state allows us to do this. But when they came back to us, you got to think that it's a... Okay, that's a structure. I mean, it got to... We weren't sure what people were living in it or not.
Right.
What's abandoned, what's not... You know, you had to find, define what an abandoned property is. Those... And then it got into, then, you know, you maintain the roof. You can't have it leaking. You got... It got through all these things, sewer, plumbing, all that stuff. And then part of the issue got out to, who's... How many people do you have to hire to do this? And it was a bunch. You had to have a bunch of people. It required an extensive expenditure of funds to just do this, okay? So, I mean, we've already... In fact, you may want to bring that whole package back up or offer it to Steve and just let him see that. Because see if that addresses some or all of what you're asking for. So we don't have to go back and have them do this whole thing over.
And that's fine. And I guess the rule of thumb is, when nobody raises their hand to say, that is my property, here's my deal with it. Like, no money claims it. That maybe... That's maybe where we draw the line. Because there's no... Now, there is no property owner to impede upon their property rights because nobody's claiming it. And it's just, you know, but...
Do we have that?
Well, I got a place on Dare Road that I didn't know that's housed back there until some residents reached out to us and there was a problem with overgrowth coming into their property. It got that bad. Like, well, who owns the property? Nobody knows. Nobody can find out.
I mean, there's a difference between who owns it and whether the owner's responsive.
Right, and...
Somebody owns it no matter what.
In Mr. Drury's case, we know there's an owner. They're just not responsive because what they have done is respond to notifications of violation for... About the grass. But the rest of the stuff, they won't do anything about.
Right.
They just ignore us.
But you've got somebody that you can...
Yeah.
You can... You can tap on their shoulder.
Are they responsive?
You know, you need to address this, but I think those other people...
Every property belongs to somebody or some corporation or LLC.
Right, but, you know, have they just...
Are we beating a dead horse?
So anyway, anyway.
Going around and around and around.
No, we're trying to get some scope here. My recommendation right now is just go pull up that all that package and bring it over here and let him review this, okay?
That's a good start.
Because it got into... It gets into a lot of things that I don't think you want to get into. One is it's just gonna be a huge expense if you have to hire people to go around and do the inspection. And then it's gonna be not only complaint driven, but it's gonna be, you're gonna go buy a place and you're gonna see it and then you're gonna end up having a call or somebody's gonna, you know, they'll call you. So it gets, there's, and then if you have people, this is, this is really interesting. If you have people coming here, they're renting a lot of property, okay? Then if you, you know, it's, it's almost a concern that is that a slumlord? Because you're gonna be going after their property. And I'll tell you what, we got, we got a lot of people in this county that own lots of pieces of property that are not gonna be happy about this, all right? Some of which you know. I'm going to names right now. So just bring that package back up and let him see what, what part of that fits into what he's looking at.
Okay, I guess, just, just discussion, not, not trying to make a decision. Last, last thing, real quick. County had a great success this weekend. Well, the, the second annual workboat races was a great success this weekend. Beautiful day, lots to turn out, a lot of participation. I can't wait for the third annual one with, with the docking contest. So if you didn't make it this past year, plan, plan a, plan a number three.
Okay. Anybody else have any, you do?
I did. A couple of quick comments. So St. John's Baptist Church on Penniman had a community day. And I wanted to thank a lot of the staff, you know, Margaret and others. We had social services show up. We had head start program there. We had fire and life safety there. We had, Nitro was there with the Sheriff's Division. I spent my time with Nitro. Mark Schaefer and I were also present. Great day. They've got a, a large property across the road from them that they are interested in considering possible future use of and would like to talk to the county about that. So I, I, I'll have you reach out to Dr. Lassiter, the pastor at that church. I think there's probably some positive events that would come out of that. Great, great congregation and a very fantastic leader. I had one other comment. I've, I've signed up for pie in the face for Alzheimer's. I suspect that will happen at some future board meeting if enough people contribute to my campaign.
Okay.
And it's well along, well along that path, so I suspect I'm gonna.
Give a pound of walrus.
Thank you. Mark and, Mark and I toured Newport News Water Works today. And we were deep into it. And I think it's amazing when you look at it. You all have probably had your tours because we, we all couldn't go at the same time. But it's phenomenal, all the work that they're doing there. And when you're driving by it on seventeen, you don't realize all that goes into it. I mean, and it, it's really a huge undertaking that they're doing. And that, that dam is gonna last for another, how many years was the first dam was built?
Nineteen eighteen.
Nineteen eighteen. So anyway, I have to thank the people from Water Works for giving us the tour. I wish I'd done it before, but I'm glad I did it now. Is there's no, anybody else? Do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I do. So I got, I got a, a tour of Lackey Clinic.
Oh, that's good.
And I, I have to say, it's been a number of years since I've been over there. I, I was extremely impressed with the Lackey Clinic. I, I didn't realize the magnitude of what they do there. But it is first class. I mean, it's first class. I mean, they've, they've got a big staff over there. A lot of them are volunteers. And the amount of people that they serve, not just here in York County, but from all over, it's just incredible. So I, I, you know, I'm glad that we're able to support them as much as we do and hopefully we can push some more support their way. Because I, I endeavor to think that that's gonna be a big need as we go forward.
And we, we got the bus route to go up there so that more people could go use the clinic. And we're very happy about that. I think.
They've got, they've got this online thing that they developed that's proprietary, that people all over the place are using, not just here in the county, but in other states are actually starting to use their online program. So it's pretty impressive if you get a chance to go by there. So kudos to them.
Okay, thank you. If we have no more comments, we go into closed session, would you please?
In accordance with section two point two point three seven one A1 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene and close meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be June seventeenth in the boardroom at your call.
At six P M.
At six P M.